Withdrawn per the request of the applicant. I invite everyone to remain standing through the end of the pledge by Officer White, first invocation by Commissioner Meeks. Commissioner Meeks.
Holy Father, we thank you for allowing us together to here today. We just praise your name.
That we get to live in this country, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Lord, we thank you for this county, we thank you for Sullivan County, and we just pray over each department, over each citizen, over our churches, over the leaders. We thank you for just us being able to live in this great place. We just ask for your guidance as we go through this meeting. May it run smoothly as we conduct business, and ultimately your will to be done, Lord, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Amen.
So let's play. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Republican Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seen. When the board opens, please record your presence. As every member recorded their presence.
Fifteen present, nine answered.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a quorum. First order is public comment on agenda-related items, but if you'll indulge me out of order, I'd like to invite our firefighter friends to come up and give us an update on the work they've been doing over the last several weeks. If anyone would like to join in, well, that's fine. Tell us what's going on.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much for giving me a few minutes to speak to you this evening. Again, my name is Kevin Marsh, and I'm Chief of Sullivan County EMS, and I wanted to come before you tonight and tell you about our response to the hurricane in Unicoi, Carter, and as well as Greenville. Now, I know it's hard for me to fathom the thought, too. We live in East Tennessee, and we're dealing with a hurricane. But Mr. Osborne had contacted me a couple of weeks ago and wanted to do a story on it. Very grateful for him, but I wanted to come to you in person and let you know exactly what our team did for that solid week. On Friday, the 27th, we knew the weather was coming, and everybody was kind of bracing. We didn't know what we were going to be expecting. Now, by no means did we think that we would not be or see the devastation that we did in Unicoi or any part of it. So the staff at Sullivan County EMS reported the work just a normal day, eight o'clock in the morning. Some of our leadership staff actually held over because they wanted to make sure that we were okay, so very grateful that they did. At 9:45 that morning, I was contacted by our EMS consultant from the state of Tennessee, Mr. John Debs, and he was requesting assistance in Unicoi, that the hospital had 10 to 20 patients, as well as some staff that were wanting to try to evacuate. So myself, I got on the phone with Deputy Chief Stacy Mahan, and he did put two additional trucks together and responded. While they were responding, he called and called me back and said, "Okay, we've had a change of plans. Raging waters has risen to where we can't even get access to the hospital." Unicoi County EMS was devastated. They lost three of their apparatuses. Several of their personnel were actually trapped inside the hospital. When Chief Mahan and our team arrived over, it was around 10:15 to 10:30 that morning, we were actually responding and providing EMS care for Unicoi. So we were working that operation. Well, about around 11:30 that morning, I got the call from Mr. Debs that wanted to know if there's any way at all we could assist Carter County in evacuating Sycamore Shuttles Hospital. Deputy Chief Ethan Thompson, he was still there. He put three trucks together, all ALS, and responded to Sycamore Shuttles, where we transported a total of nine patients from there to Houston Valley and Bristol. So that evening, when things kind of calmed down, of course, as you well know, we were very blessed and fortunate that we had some power outages, had some trees down, did not get the damage that these other counties did get. So that evening, I myself went over in Unicoi, was with our staff. I was able to meet with Director Buckner, and we sat down for a long period of time, and I said, "I know your staff is devastated, your equipment's gone. What can we do as a neighboring county to try to assist you?" So from Friday morning, from getting the call at 9:45, we were able to provide 24-hour care, two trucks, until Monday evening at eight o'clock that night. I was contacted by them later on in the week. They were extremely appreciative of the service because they had no EMS. So we were kind of getting everything together, but then Saturday morning came. So Saturday morning, I was contacted again that Greenville was out of water. So they had 61 patients in the hospital that they had to get transported to the Houston Valley. Luckily, Sullivan County EMS arose with assistance of Deputy Chief Chase. We were able to send four trucks to Greenville and assist with those evacuations as well. I'm extremely proud of our team. We have done so much. We had a total of 51 team members to participate in every bit of this week with over 600 managers. They rose to the occasion, and I wanted each and every one of you all to know that we appreciate and was able to do that because of you, your dedication, your commitment to Sullivan County EMS's process, and we're grateful for that. So thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, that goes both ways. We're extremely grateful for you and all the work that you're doing. We couldn't do without you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Do we have a public agenda? You can bring me both of them. We have an agenda. Getting them must come in late. We have an agenda-related public comment signing sheet and a non-agenda-related public comment sheet. Does anybody wish to? General public have one? Would anybody like to sign either one? Without objection. And just a reminder, we're in the work session right now because the rezoning hearing has been canceled because the applicant of the zoning has withdrawn their request, specifically the Rock Quarry. The rezoning has been withdrawn. Without objection. Under public comment rules, you can. Three minutes?
Aight.
Mr. Black King.
What I'd like to do, Eric Kearney, can you come up forward, please? Be back there. Uh-oh. Eric, I know that, you know, all this has happened, and especially in the Hickory Tree area out towards Widener's Valley, we had a lot of trees down, and your all's department went out there and cleaned all the roads and cut all the, everything that they could cut, so the power, it's kind of hard to cut trees when the power's still on. And you've got to work with, you know, the utilities to get the power out so you can cut the trees out of the road and all that. But I know that you all worked mine, at least, or mower, pointing to where people could get into their houses, and then the utilities could help restore power and, you know, everything else that, you know, that goes along with the power. So I'd like to say thank you all for what you all did and going out and cleaning up. And then after all that, you all went to Johnson County, Mountain City, and helped up there also. So I just want to shout out that what you all did, we really appreciate, you know, everything you all did, especially the people up in Hickory Tree area and out Jake Dog Core and out in that Widener's Valley area, because there was a lot of trees and stuff down out there, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
If no one else has anything for agenda-related public comment, public comment portion of the agenda is closed. Next order is review of old business and rapid resolutions. But we do have a request from Commissioner Slagel. Which item is it you wish to roll to the front of the calendar, sir?
Item number eight.
Item number eight. Is there any objection to Commissioner Slagel moving item number eight to the front of the calendar? Without objection, recognize Commissioner Slagel, item number eight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. This is a resolution authorizing distribution of hotel motel tax funds for destination marketing development. Whereas Sullivan County Commission recognizes the importance of tourism to the economic vitality of Sullivan County, partnership between Sullivan County and neighboring cities is deemed to be in the best interest of Sullivan County for the purpose of destination marketing and development and overall collaboration. Whereas each city has notified the Sullivan County Commission that their preferred tourism partner be set as NEDA, Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, for the purposes of tourism enablement within Sullivan County. Commission desires to establish a mechanism for distribution of the hotel motel tax funds to support such partnership, as well as establish tourism leadership within Sullivan County. Therefore, it be resolved Sullivan County Commission that distribution of funds to cities' tourism partner, NEDA, Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, shall be set at 50% of the net proceeds collected by Sullivan County, plus the clerk's 5% commission. Distribution to occur within 45 days of the end of each calendar quarter each year. As of October 31st, the amount collected, $962,852.55, that is less the clerk's 5% commission. The initial amount to be distributed shall be $481,426.27. With that, I'd like to thank all the city leadership that's here, county tourism bodies, and also county tourism that's been really helpful in some discussion with this and development of this, and thank the commissioners that helped support this, and I thank the commissioners that reached out for comment and made modifications, you know, prior to being here. Just appreciate everybody helping me work on this. You know, we generated around a million dollars in tax recovery, and cities collected that tax. You know, it's our duty to look out for the needs of Sullivan County, to work professionally with the tourism entities in the region, and with all the legislative bodies. And so this really helps the region as a whole.
You heard the explanation on item number eight. Any questions, comments, or response on item number eight? Recognize Commissioner Jones.
I would like to know what is the budget for the regional tourism office? So we now want to know what the total budget is that they have for the tourism office that you want to send this money. Here's your Alicia here, she can speak to that if she's available.
Thank you. Our operating budget is $150,000 with two full-time employees, and then when we receive grants and cooperatives, which is primarily how we operate, our budget does increase to around a little under $300,000 annually.
So Sullivan County gives you $10,000. I know you came and asked for $42,000 in our budget cycle, and how much does Washington County give you?
Washington County is also at $10,000.
And Carter County? There's eight counties, right?
Correct.
And what's Carter County doing?
Carter County is, we are funded through their tourism office there, and their allocation is $3,000.
And Unicoi?
The town of, I'm sorry, Unicoi County is also funded through their chamber, and they are at $1,000.
And Greenville?
Greenville is $3,000 through their tourism office as well, and we also receive funds from the city of Greenville.
Okay. And what's that?
That is $1,750.
Okay. And then Hawkins County, do they contribute?
They do. They come in at $2,000.
And Johnson?
Johnson County is 500.
Is Hancock included?
Hancock chooses not to allocate for tourism.
So, okay, so that's the eight counties?
Yes.
How much does Bristol contribute?
We receive allocations through the Explore Bristol program, saying that's Visit Kingsport and Visit Johnson City. Those come in each at $12,000.
And Kingsport's $12,000 also?
Yes.
Is Johnson City?
Yes.
$12,000? Yeah, so where's the other 100 in the, that don't equal?
Correct. We are also a membership-based organization, so we have a roster of over 100 tourism-related businesses in which we provide services for. We also, the bulk sum of those dollars are coming from the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development.
So the state funds are the end businesses?
Correct. The state funds, each of the nine regional entities, while we're not state employees, we're standalone nonprofit, they do allocate each of the nine regional organizations.
So if we were to do this resolution, it would double your, more than double your annual budget?
It would, however, we would also work with our partners in Bristol and Kingsport in terms of marketing for that, so.
But we want it for Sullivan County besides the two cities?
Sure. So we have a marketing plan. I will go into detail with it, but what we're already doing, we would enhance those efforts, of course, with digital print, content, assets, photography, things like that, work alongside the Sullivan County Department of Archives and Tourism as well.
Did you're asking us for 481, well, the resolution's asking for 481,000. We should know where that money's going, what it's going to do. What's your plan for the county?
I'm happy to go into more detail if you'd like. Okay, absolutely. Efforts already taking place in Sullivan County by Northeast Tennessee Tourism, Visit Kingsport, and Explore Bristol. Are you referring to just rural Sullivan County? Are you talking about the cities?
Yes. That's where this money's coming from.
From the rural portion of Sullivan County?
Primarily. We're getting a 1% on the share, but we're getting from our, a lot of it's coming in. Our intent, I thought our intent was to enhance the rural area of the county, and we created this hotel motel.
Absolutely. I do, I understand that a large portion of those funds do come from the lodging partners in the city of Bristol and the city of Kingsport as well, but for the rural community, things that we're already doing and that would significantly enhance would include content specific to the rural portions of Sullivan County. Love City Swinging Bridge is a good example. The Heritage Museum, we're looking forward to working with them in the future. Veterans Memorial, Dairy Inn, events, trip ideas, such as, you know, perhaps creating an asset of the Sullivan County Heritage Trail with your historic assets. We also can look at doing print, advertising in regional and national publications. Tennessee Vacation Guide would be a great example. Sullivan County already has a great portion in our visitor guide, enhancing that as well as in our magazine. Probably would be a great idea to do some new photography for the rural areas of Sullivan County. And we also want to include the South Holston River corridor because that's a huge asset that is in the county area, not in city limits, that we could look at promoting as well.
So out of the, and I want to ask Mr. Leff to come up, please. And I've worked with Kingsport quite a bit on some different, and they've been generous in working with, and I appreciate that in bringing some conventions into this region. But what's the, how much does Kingsport on an annual basis receive from hotel motel tax?
City or Visit Kingsport?
Well, wherever the pot of money is.
As of October 31st, $107,367.22 is what Kingsport's contributed.
No, I said, what did they receive?
Oh, gosh, okay.
That's a whole different.
I believe lodging tax for the entire city was $2.2 million annually, on the state on average. We received through our private act a percentage of that, which ends up being 67.5%.
Right. So it collectively over the lodging and whatever's under the hotel motel?
Our portion that is allocated to us from the city's roughly 1.3 million.
1.3 million. And can Bristol tell us how much they have received?
Good evening. I'm Matt Bowles with Explore Bristol. In Bristol, Tennessee, lodging tax collection is about $650,000. We receive $400,000 from the city of Bristol, Tennessee. We also have other partners with Bristol, Virginia as well.
I guess where I'm going with this, we're already given $10,000, and we, and that was before we even had the hotel motel tax, we were given $10,000. You're given 12, and you got $400,000. Frank, you're given 12, and you got 1.3, and I don't know what Johnson City or Greenville says. But it seems to me like we're already funding a substantial proportion of this budget already, and I can't, I can't support giving 50% of what we've collected to increase your budget to make it over 700, almost $800,000. I just have some real issues with that, and we've got some things that we need to do in the county to help promote us specifically. And so I just wanted to get those numbers out on the table so we know what they are, and I appreciate them, and thank you, Frank. We've worked together quite a bit on some things, and I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
Can I respond to some of that?
Yeah, then we'll recognize Commissioner Crosswell.
Sure. Same, those are great questions. Sullivan County contributes about 2.2% to that $962,000. The cities have collected this money, and we beat the cities to the trough as far as collecting hotel motel tax. Sullivan County tourism budget is roughly $20,000, and so this is, you know, they roughly would have 25 times that amount, and we started collecting it August of 2023. There's not been a plan, or a dime allocated for it. So this is at least a plan, but thank you for your feedback and comments.
Commissioner Crosswell.
Thank you, Chairman. Alicia?
I got a feeling you might want to move to the front row.
Come on, just stop. Thank you all for coming. Now, when we passed this lodging tax, our, the main purpose that we passed that was to help the Sullivan County Department of Tourism. And as Matt says, the 20, we haven't, we haven't spent any of it yet because our tourism director has not had the staff, and we were waiting till we got some good funds, because there are ways that we want to spend it here in Sullivan County. But now, one question for you. We give you $10,000 right now, what have you done on it?
Unfortunately, we did not receive $10,000 because we are still categorized as a nonprofit, so in that budget, all the nonprofits were cut 50% for fiscal year '24, so we actually only received $5,000 this year.
But you got it twice here, right?
Absolutely. With that $10,000, we have been able to send quite a few media tours, as well as influencers specific to that area. We'll mention South Holston again. We've had several fishing trips through there that have been recognized through the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development and some national publications. We also have a city guide specific just to Sullivan County. No other county receives that in our visitor guide as well. And then, of course, Sullivan County is also, has a destination on our website, as well as with events on our website, too.
Hey, who does this name, who do you answer to? Who do you report to?
I report to a board of 21, and they include all of the tourism offices, as well as member representatives from our membership as well. At the end of the day, I probably would want to answer to the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development since they are a larger funder of ours, but we are a 501(c)(6) nonprofit.
And like I said, our tourism director, we've been waiting till we got some money, got some clarification of what we could do, because we haven't gotten that yet, and he hasn't had any funds or the staff, and he will have two new part-time employees coming up, so. But thank you for what you do, thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am, I will add that your tourism director does sit on our board, and Sullivan County has been a founding member of our entity, and then he and another staff member have also completed our hospitality and tourism certification.
Thank you.
Recognize the sponsor, and then Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Commissioner Crosswell. I was fortunate enough to spend some time yesterday with Matthew Johnson, and he has roughly $350,000 planned. He can't give the details of that because there are reasons based on the training he received from his spouse for his tourism certification that he can't give those details. So we did go some of its out, you know, for a website, for bid, but, you know, he's in alignment with some of their plan, and his comments were, you know, their strength in the collective, and his comments were also, you know, we need to walk before we run. So he has a plan, and I'm confident that the rest of this money could help in that plan. So thank you.
Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess with all the numbers that were flying around that you were talking about, I've just got a straightforward question for you, Alicia, if you don't mind. Because I was hearing different $10,000, $20,000, $10,000, then I was hearing like $100,000, but off of 1. something million, 2. something million. And I guess my question would be, at the $481,426 that is in this resolution, would we be the largest contributor?
You'd like it.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say when we did this resolution almost two years ago, that I don't know what everyone else's intent for this money was, but my intent was to grow it and turn a dollar into hopefully $18 or $20. And Alicia can attribute that, that is an accurate amount, right? Alicia, if you market correctly tourism, you can turn a dollar into $20. So my vision, my dream for this money is to make a revenue stream. If we give her a half million dollars, that's $10 million. I know that's a perfect world, but even if you get half of that, that's 10 cents on a property tax rate. I want to see other streams of revenue, but this is the only way I see to have one with this, with this tax. I think it's a fair compromise, our county keeping half of it to do as they wish, and try to grow the other half through marketing and through the plans that Alicia has. And to be honest, you know, Sullivan County doesn't have a lot of tourist attractions in the rural part of the county, and, but maybe we can change that. And when we worked on this resolution with the other entities, all they asked was be fair, and I think this is a fair compromise, so that's why I'm supporting it, and that's why I'm asking others to support it also.
Commissioner Glover.
I would like to yell about time, but Mr. Crosswell, you don't have to hurt, if I could. It won't be a problem.
I can recognize you.
Well, let her go then, I don't have to deal with that.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Crosswell.
Mr. Vanover, my dream when we got this money was for Sullivan County Department of Tourism to use it, and we can market with this money, and you said we don't have any money in tourism?
We don't have lots.
We have got the oldest pre-Silva War buildings in the state of Tennessee that are falling apart. We could get money to get them fixed, get people in here. Nobody wants to come in and see something. It's just, so we do have things that we can market. We have the new Holston Parody museum that we'll see. I think that we have some, we've got the river, we've got the park. We do have attractions in rural Sullivan County, and I'd like to see for that money. I'd like to work together for that. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Since, since you mentioned Commissioner Vanover, I'm going to give you an opportunity to respond. I don't recognize Commissioner Irison. He's next on the list.
I appreciate your comments, and I'm all about preserving history. I taught history in high school for a while. And if you don't remember your past, you're going to have to relive it. So history is very, very important. But when you look at it in a financial stance, how's that going to increase tourism? I don't really see a lot of tourism being increased by those buildings. So we're not open very often now for tourists. Hopefully, we will be in the future, and hopefully that'll be a tourist attraction. But we need to get ahead of this and start advertising those things. And through Alicia, I think she has a more powerful way to advertise than anyone else does. So we need to advertise those buildings. We need to preserve them. But if we spend a million dollars on some of these buildings, how long is it going to take to get that back? How many visitors have to come to go through those buildings to get a return on your money? I mean, that's the way I look at it. And I'm all about preserving too and the history, but I think we've got to look at it from the economical point of view. Thank you.
You turned, you turned your mic. Should have kept your mic on there. I'm going to, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Irison. And I'm going to come back, come back to you in the rotation because I've got quite a few folks seeking recognition. I want, I want to keep it fair in order that people seek recognition. So I'm going to recognize Commissioner Irison. And then Commissioner, then Commissioner Glover, because you were next on the list.
Just going to say a couple of things. One thing I'll say is that I hear a lot about regionalism and people talk about regionalism. Sometimes it's a bad word, but at the same time, the one thing that I do know regionally that works is tourism. Tourism, you can't get somebody to come to Bristol without going through Sullivan County or going back and forth or Kingsport the same way. So money being spent through the cities, as long as it's bringing people to the area, I think is a good thing. I know that that money sounds like a lot. It is a lot of money. When you talk about Kingsport's 1.2 million, I think it was, and $600,000 from Bristol to $2 million. But our closest same size area competition is Asheville. And last I heard, they spent $10 million a year. So, and because of that, they have more people flying in, they have lower airline costs. It's, it's a lot of people coming to the area because they spend so much. And nobody, nobody outside of this area is going to have any idea what we have to offer unless we tell them. And the only way we can tell them is through advertisement and going to the right places. So I know at one point we were talking, I listened to them in the back of the room, and we were talking about this. And Kingsport and Bristol and Dada were sitting at that back table, and they were excited about some opportunities. I heard some things like geo mapping and things that I remember I'm talking about. And things that they would love to be able to do, but just plainly can't afford. And hopefully this will actually get in that direction. I hope there's some plans for the airport. I hope you're able to look at those kind of things as well. But if, if this is something that we do, hopefully we can get you to come maybe do four early reports of things that you're looking at and things you're able to do for us. That way it'll make people feel a bit better that we're getting some bang for our buck. But as of now, we've, I guess, if you take the 5% out, we're at $1 million. We've got $1 million in the account. And spending that to grow that, as Zane said, I think is a good idea. I think getting some bang for our buck is a good idea. But also, if we sit back and we don't like the direction of it, this isn't a permanent thing. This is just saying this is where we're going right now. And, and if we have some things, and, you know, Matthew Johnson comes up and says, I've got a plan, I need $500,000, then at that point, we can look at reallocating or doing different things. But, I mean, I, I hope that we look at doing something to help the area. The rural Sullivan County, absolutely. At the same time, you help rural Sullivan County by getting all the areas to, so, thank you.
Commissioner Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I've sat here and listened to Sam's concerns, and they're valid. I've sat here and listened to Mr. Crosswell's concerns, and they're valid. Zane's, and Mark's, and everybody else's comments. And we're all agreeing that tourism is the way to go. And the best I can remember, this money has to be spent on tourism and allocated for tourism. And at this time, I'd like to, I'd like to offer Mr. Slakel an amendment if I could. And I'd like to offer this because I think we're all in agreeance that we need to take care of Matthew and his position and the things that he needs and things that he wants. And we've asked him to do a lot with very little the last year or two. And he does a good job, and I think he'll continue to do a good job. He's a, he's a very smart young man. I think he'll be around for a long time, and his heart's in it. But I'd like, I'd like to read this to you, Commissioner Slakel. The Sullivan County Board of Commissioners wishes to better develop and find the open nature of undefined amounts from hotel motel tax collections in resolutions from 2020 to November 21st. Establishing that appropriation, the 50% of the tax, 50% of the collection shall go to NADA and remaining proceeds identified as $481,426.27, which is 50% of the hotel motel tax collections today, shall go to the Sullivan County Office of Director of Tourism. 100% of that. This formula shall be assigned going forward annually to appropriate 50% of all hotel motel tax collections less the department's 5% commission to NADA or destination per Bristol and Kingsport, with the remaining 50% of collections going to the Sullivan County Office of Director of Tourism. This appropriation shall be identified in the annual Sullivan County Finance Department control account for hotel motel tax collections. That way we'll make sure that Matthew's took care of, our concerns are taken care of. That's going to be a lot of money that Mr. Johnson's going to have in his account. I'd like to present this to you if you would look at it.
And then before you respond to that, Mr. Slakel, just, just a reminder, in work session, we don't act on amendments. You can, you can present one, but you have, we can only act on it next week at our regular commission meeting. But you're more than, you're more than welcome to respond. You're more than welcome to present.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I brought it forward is this is a work session, and we're talking about a lot of money. And I think anytime we're talking about a lot of money, we need to lay everything on tape.
I, I agree. Sorry. It's just we, we can't act on it tonight. That's all, that's all I'm saying. I think you can present it, but we can only, he can, we can only accept or reject an amendment at the commission meeting. You're more than welcome to respond to it, Commissioner Slakel.
I think it's a well-worded amendment. Like Chairman said, I can't accept or reject said amendment. But, I mean, the intention here was to create a fair stream of tourism enablement funds. And we ran it 50-50 for a reason. And I don't have, I don't have concerns with that amendment, sir.
So then we'll, we'll act, we'll act on the amendment one way or the other next week, Commissioner Slakel. Where were you finished, Mr. Glover?
Are your words satisfied with what I put in that? I know we can't act on it, but.
Commissioner Glover, I know you didn't write this because it's all spelled correctly. But yes.
And, and I'm not going to act on that comment myself, so.
He didn't graduate from Sullivan, Lisa.
And I'm going to recognize Commissioner Neves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I just had some requests. Is there a process in which we can request particular areas or make suggestions for what we believe should be promoted? And if so, what is that process? Maybe to speak with Alicia or Matthew? Is that, I might be answering my question here. Yes.
Yes, I mean, I think the intent here is partnership. I think Alicia and team have already started work with Sullivan County. I know for a fact it's happened. I don't want to speak the details of that, but I know for a fact it's happening. And I'd also like to say, I mean, it's, it's, it's great to see unilateral support from both the city of Bristol, city of Kingsport, independent tourism organizations, Visit Kingsport, Explore Bristol. There's clearly an alignment of support behind the direction. And while Commissioner Irison mentioned, you know, working within the region, that, that impacts everybody in a positive way from a tourism perspective. So we may all, all have the same overall, the same overall plan should apply across the region. Sullivan County should have specific things, to Ms. Crosswell's point, that where, where funds are allocated. And so I think it's a partnership, and I think that, I know that wasn't made in the amendment, but we could actually put something in here related to every quarter report. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. And I'm sure Ms. Els is be glad to be here to present how that money's being spent. Good question. Thank you.
I just have one more comment. My biggest issue with the hotel motel tax from the beginning is that we did not have a plan. And I just am like, if we're not going to have a plan, we didn't need to be doing what we did. But now we have a plan, and so that's, that's why I'm in support of this. So thank you.
Commissioner Crosswell.
Thank you, Chairman. And will this money, Matt, will it go before the, like the original plan? If they won't spend money, does it have to go before the budget committee and then come to the whole commission? Or we just give it to them?
We're allocating 50% to NADA.
So they don't have to come back and tell us what, I mean, they'll come back and give us a report. Excuse me, but the budget committee or the commission will not be getting on that, is what you're saying?
No, they, they wouldn't. And I certainly am not an expert on tourism. So I would entrust them as I think we have, as I mentioned, unilateral alignment amongst the cities and two other independent tourism bodies certainly are smarter than me in how to manage that money from a tourism perspective.
One last comment. Again, Matthew, our tourism director, has had no money, no staff, and he's giving both. And with Sullivan County, this growing, we, once I came over to our military park opening Monday, you saw the crowd there, people that were just going to come and visit that park. We have two new restaurants. This is just enjoyable. That's, that's my district. Coffee shop and Matthew's working right now with Mr. Jones on Exit 69. There's going to be some big funds happening on Exit 69. So we, we need to give Matthew a chance to, to, we need to give him a chance before we give away the money. That's the way I look at it. So, but thank you. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Crosswell. I agree with you, and I think Commissioner Glover spoke to that. I think, you know, the numbers right now aren't fully reported. There, there are a little bit of a lag in those numbers. So, I mean, that number is probably going to easily approach $1 million in total aggregate. So if Commissioner Glover's amendment was to clear, he'd have over half a million dollars, of which he's got a plan of around $350,000 to spend right now. So I'm proud of the work he's doing, and I think that only reinforces him and gives him 25 times the amount of money to be able to work with. And I think he'll do exactly the same things that you're suggesting that he do in best to Sullivan County. So I agree with you.
Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is a great example of what, I'm going to reinforce what Commissioner Irison said as far as regionalism and cooperation. And, you know, I think this commission has been criticized for, for not having that mentality. And this is a great example of that. I really appreciate the city of Bristol, the city of Kingsport, how they came together when we were trying to put this together, and they cooperated. They didn't have to do that, but they did. They, they stepped out and did it, and they are contributing the lion's share of this. So it is a fair thing to do. And I also think that we have to be very careful that we make sure that we're doing exactly what we talked about as far as how we're going to use this, what the spirit of using it. Because we were down in a conference last week, and we actually had, I'll give you an example. We actually had a road commissioner who made the comment that when you have a lot of tourism that comes in the area, it tears up the roads. So we need to look at using the tourism money to take care of those roads. And I'm sitting there going, are you kidding me? I mean, that is just so far from the spirit of what this tourism money is supposed to be used for. So I just think we have to be very careful starting out that we don't crack that area of going into a place where you can rationalize that, you know, the tourism money should be used for that. But what is the real spirit of what the tourism money is supposed to be used for? And I think Commissioner Vanover has made that very clear from the very beginning. And the cities cooperated. They agree with that. I think we need to follow through, and this is a very fair solution. So I appreciate Commissioner Slakel for putting this together.
Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to, just a quick question, again, just a clarifying question. Mr. Glover, your amendment didn't change any numbers or anything. You just clarified where the other 50% was going to be going, correct?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much for that. And I also want to apologize to Ms. Alicia there that I've, I've been sick this week, and I didn't want my question to come off as sharp. I just, I've been sick, and I was just kind of just asking the question point blank. Thank you very much for your answer.
Commissioner King.
Thank you. I want to be on the fence of Matthew Johnson. I've heard his name come up a whole lot in here tonight. Matthew Johnson cannot do what we're asking him to do. I mean, he's going to be over the tourism, he's going to be over archives, and he's going to be over the campus up here. Matthew Johnson can't do all that. So he's going to have to have some help some way. And I think if we're going to have a tourism department that's going to grow like it's, we're saying it's going to grow, maybe we, we need to let him run the other part of what he's doing and hire a new person for tourism. That's, that's just my thinking, but Matthew cannot keep up with what he's doing. And when you get spread out, you don't do a good job with either one of the things that you're doing. And I don't want to say that Matthew's, I'm not being critical of Matthew, but he just can't physically do what all he's doing. We've got a lot to do with our archives. We need, we need a new place to store all these records and stuff. And, and, you know, I think that's important, and that's something that we have to do as a county. We would say it's mandated that we have to take care of all these records. And if that's what he's going to do or needs to do, and then, you know, at some point in time, it's our campus up here, and we get the ball field and stuff in, we're going to have to have somebody that's going to run that part. So we're looking at probably three, three people doing what Matthew is supposedly trying to do or what we're expecting him to do, Matthew. So I think Matthew has to take some help. I don't think we need to be pushing a whole lot more on Matthew than what he's already got.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Ward.
Lot of great comments tonight. Lot of great comments. Matt, would, would you say 98% of that money comes from within inside the city limits of Kingsport and Bristol?
Yes, sir. Roughly 2.2% comes from Sullivan County.
I'm trying to be real nice. My mom said I can't say anything nasty, but.
Rural county.
We never have a problem reaching inside the city limits and take, get money. But sometimes we have a hard time giving it back. And I think, I think if you give some of these people right here a million dollars worth of tourism money, they're probably going to turn it into 15 or 20 million dollars. Matthew Johnson does a heck of a job at what he does. I probably agree a little bit. I think we always owe it towards Matthew. But the issue I have is we're, we're always got our hands out inside the city, but we never want to give some of it back. And there's only a handful of commissioners in here that doesn't have some of their district inside the city limits. So I'm not sure. It, it would be hard to look out into the rural parts of Sullivan County for tourism. Bluntly, there's a little bit there, but I'm not sure there's a whole lot in the rural areas. It's all inside the city limits. So I, I do support this resolution. I think it would be a great idea to partner up with this bunch. I agree with the amendment. I think Herschel's got a, a good idea to, to the other part. But I, I think Matthew will do a great job running this and teaming up with Kingsport and Bristol and spending this money to work on our airports to draw more people into this area. So I'm. So I'm, I'm all for this resolution.
Commissioner Crosswatt.
Thank you Chairman, uh, one last word. Um, Matthew is handling tourism right now, he's, he's had, until we can hire a facility manager for the Bluntville campus, he is taking care of all of that and he's doing wonderful at it. He's got two employees and he will have two more employees, so I think he can handle both departments with the help and, and if he can get the help and the money, then he does, he do good. That's my last statement, uh, thank you.
Commissioner King.
Uh, where I live, I live right into the back door of Johnson City, which is part of Sullivan County. Uh, you know, and we've got, uh, attractions in, in Johnson City that's in Sullivan County. Rocky Mountain is probably the, the biggest one. And then there's some others that, that would tie into that, but I, I guess where Johnson City and the people that live in Johnson City that also live in Sullivan County, where do they fit into this pattern? I know that, uh, you know, we've got two big camper sales right there at the edge of Johnson City, uh, in Sullivan County and so, uh, and also in our district, right there at the Blood City Bridge, we got a campground that stays full year-round and most of those are people that's traveling or working in this area and they come in and set up a camper and stay. And that, those, they're booked pretty much year-round, so, you know, I know that Blood City has got some stuff that, you know, the new, new, the new museum is something, an attraction. And then South Houston River is also, and, you know, if you're ever around South Houston and see the amount of boats going up and down the, the road there on the back of a trailer, you'll see how many, uh, people that's coming in from mostly out of state and they do pay money. So, uh, we're, we're, I guess my question is, you know, we're gonna give to Bristol and Kingsport, Johnson City's also a city that's in, in Sullivan County, so are we gonna do anything for Johnson City in this form?
Commissioner Slakel.
That's a question.
I, yes, sir, thank you Commissioner King. Uh, current contribution as of close of October thirty-first in Johnson City is zero dollars.
Commissioner King, you respond to that, please?
And that, that, that's, uh, you something that I didn't, Rocky Mountain is not into that, are they still in the county? That's, I guess that's my question, because they are surrounded on both side, all three sides by Johnson City.
Funds or hotel motel taxes is where it's coming from, so.
Are they not, uh, I, okay, I see, but still, uh, I guess what I'm saying is how much money does that area over there? I mean, that's part of the rural part of the county and, you know, I'd like to see some numbers, you know, what is collected in that part of our, our district, let's put it that way. What do you have?
Hotel taxes is zero. Now, what I would say is that.
The campground is not?
From Johnson City's area, it's zero.
Okay.
Uh, there is contribution from Sullivan County and it's about two point two percent in rural areas. But to your question though, I think the whole point, and I think it's been made a few times by different commissioners, is that, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna entrust these funds to this tourism body that our cities and two other independent tourism organizations have said, we all unilaterally, legally agree that this is the direction and I think we should entrust that to them. And I think that will help Blood City as well. And as I note to that, Blood City's had some changes. I'd love to see Blood City come back in this room.
Yes.
Okay.
Recognize Commissioner Glover, then Commissioner Jones.
You know, sitting here listening to all the conversation, you know, we're finally doing something that makes a little sense. We're, uh, finally doing something that makes a little sense, I'm gonna explain why. Look, look what's, look what's happened today, just right up the road from us, the grand opening of the Heart Rock Casino. I mean, just a lot of, and this fund is not gonna do nothing but grow. More people's gonna be coming here. And you know, we know we need some more people for, for Matthew's office, but this, this funding, when it grows, we can use that money and that funding to hire these people. And you know, when I'm saying we make it sense, that's something we don't have to raise taxes to pay for. I just think, but, I mean, that's, I don't wanna turn a cartwheel, come back through the road now, 'cause we're finally gonna do something, put some people in that we don't have to raise taxes to pay for. So I'm one hundred percent behind this, I'm one hundred percent for it. We're taking care of our tourism department, we're taking care of Bristol's tourism department and Kingsport's tourism department. And it's, it's gonna work. And just like Mr. Ierson said, if it don't, come back, but the plan's in place. I think Matthew's gonna come in here, lay some stuff on the table for us and let us know what he's doing, let us know what his plans are and, you know, just like Ms. Crosswatt said, I think that's a concern, is to give him the tools that he needs to provide the services for the people of Sullivan County and that does what Sam was wanting to done too. It provides things for the rural part of the county. So I'm one hundred percent for this, I'm done, but I, I, I'm just taking it dead that we're doing something that makes some sense. Thanks.
Commissioner Jones.
I appreciate all the comments tonight and, uh, I know where, I don't, I don't know about Explore Bristol, I've never worked with them. Uh, was hoping to, to, uh, hear shortly, uh, but with Visit Kingsport, I know where the dollars go. Uh, bring a lot of tournaments into town and it's very competitive to bring a convention into, the competition is huge around the country to bring in a convention to this area, to bring in the sports teams and what they're able to do with their dollars is to help offset some of the costs for a team to come in. In hotel motel, uh, room rates, uh, they can be, it can make a big difference in what you're able to do with competitive, with the contribution that comes. I don't know if y'all know, it's not just putting, uh, tracks in racks at the Wilkes Center, it's a whole lot more than that. I don't know where this money's gonna go, other than just advertising. Tourism advertising. Can I go to, can I go to, uh, the regional office and ask for assistance in offsetting, bringing a convention here? Will they be able to give me money out of this to help bring a ball team in, a tournament that brings a lot of money into the, whether it's, no matter what level it is, softball, uh, baseball, volleyball, all the sports, soccer, to help offset those room costs? Is that something this, this money? Can I go to Alicia and ask for money to do that like I can go to the, uh, Explore Bristol or Visit Kingsport? I'm almost willing to go back and give Kingsport and Bristol two hundred thousand and give Alicia the fifty that she asked for in the budget process, well, she asked for forty-two, which would've made fifty-two. And then, uh, I apologize, I should've known that, that we cut that, that the, there was a request to cut the nonprofits fifty percent in, uh, support, in this rooms for that. So we cut, cut her ten thousand to five thousand, but I'd be willing to go back and give her that full request and give Bristol and Kingsport, 'cause I know I can go to them and ask for the, uh, funds to bring in some events that I know directly are gonna be spending here. I don't know where the four hundred eighty-one thousand will be spent, uh, other than marketing and advertising, but what will it, if I'm bringing a team in, what can you do to make me come here versus going to South Carolina and Sparkville or to go to Asheville or to go to any other city than I think? The, uh, Explore Bristol, Visit Kingsport can testify to those numbers. Same, I don't know if it's proper for you to go ask this elected official for money for hotel rooms. I'm just kidding, that's a joke, that's a joke, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I get you, I'm kidding. Uh, no, I get, I get.
That actually clears the board. Commissioner Slakel, I wanna give you the final comments on the resolution.
No, I, I thank you. I thank everybody for the comments and the feedback. Again, I want to thank the cities for being here and the tourism bodies for being here. Um, also unrelated, I just wanna thank Madalyn Luttrell, uh, City Council, for his years of dedicated service to the city of Bristol. I know that, uh, that won't end and I just wanna thank him for being here and thank him for his service.
What's your, what's your desire for the resolution next week?
Uh, first reading.
Sponsor will run, uh, item number eight on the first reading at our next, uh, next Thursday's full commission meeting and I thank everyone that was here on behalf of, uh, this, this resolution. Without objection, we're gonna go back to the front of the calendar. Recognize Commissioner Crosswatt on item number one.
Yes, I, I, um.
All right, we got under oath business. Is it, is on the calendar in the commission cabinet's schedule, is that the calendar? This is item one, under oath business.
Yes. Thank you Chairman. Uh, Mr. Slakel, he has asked me to call this resolution, so.
Sponsor will withdraw item number one at next week's scheduled commission meeting.
Thank you.
Without objection, recognize Commissioner Ierson on item number two.
Works a better if you hit the right button.
Oh, I, I know you have.
So this resolution, and I gave everybody a handout, everybody's gotta hand out your best, give you a little more information if you'd like. Uh, I was hoping to have our TCRS representative here tonight, but with what I thought was gonna be a packed house with the zoning, I didn't think it'd be, uh, we didn't wanna be here till midnight, so I didn't actually have him, but he said he was willing to come if we wanna have him come next week for, at least participate via zone if we can figure out a way to do that. So this resolution started back in May at one of our TCRS, I'm sorry, one of the, uh, TCCA meetings and discussion was about the rest, the retirements in TCRS and they talked about a bridge program. It piqued my interest because that's how I retired early, was through a bridge program. It allowed me to go at a much earlier age than I would've been able to do any other way. So not wanting to mess this up and throw something out here that is not endorsed by everybody, I went through the process. Uh, took it, my idea or this to the sheriff and I said, is this something that you would even want? Because I don't wanna start something that's gonna mess up you and have people retire at mandatory retirement age that, um, is going to hurt you. So he looked at it, he sat down with me, we talked about it, he loved the idea. So, okay, so now we buy it as far as do we want. Now can we afford it? So I got together with Larry Bailey at his office and we had a presentation and Justin Ball came up from TCRS and made a presentation. Didn't seem to be any major concerns, it was a little on the expensive side because it's three and a half percent on the retirement. So, uh, talking to the sheriff after that, he said he wanted to talk to his team and make sure that they were, not seeing something that he would see different. So he went through that. He came back and he said, I know it's expensive, he said, but as a matter of fact, my team wants this so bad, so we're gonna take half. Half go to the employees, so one point seven five of the employees, one point seven five of the county. So after that, we continued to look at this. So we had, uh, Justin Ball from TCRS come up, the proposal that's in front of you is what he actually gave, the benefit plan of what it allows him to do. So under this benefit plan, you can read all of it through if you'd like, the biggest difference is over on page five. So on page four and five, it shows you what happens to date if somebody retires with twenty-five years, but they didn't get to age fifty-five, they get a reduction of thirty percent, they get a thousand dollars a month. If they retire without the reduction, they're getting a thirteen hundred dollars a month. And that's if they're making forty thousand dollars a year. The next page shows if we accept a bridge program, it goes to nineteen hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's life-changing money. That's a fifty percent increase in their retirement. So that is wonderful to me, it's a great idea, it's a great thing. Uh, we had some questions from people and what happens with people that have already retired? If they've retired and they're still in that age fifty-five to sixty-two, they get this benefit and the county doesn't pay anything, it comes from TCRS. So there are at least a dozen people that are retired from the sheriff's department that will actually get this benefit as, if it passes, when it passes, they want to get that benefit. So, um, I have done a lot of research, I've asked, had to ask tons of questions, I'll open up the floor for anybody to ask any questions that you'd like to and I will try my best to answer and if I can, I will give you the answer.
You've heard the explanation on item number two, before it's open for discussion, recognize Commissioner Crosswatt.
Thank you Chairman. Uh, I've read this twice, Mark, I still don't get it, but my only concern is the sheriff's department's already having problems finding officers.
Yes.
If we have, when people retire fifty-five with twenty-five years of service, then I'm afraid they're gonna come back and say, well, we can't hire an officer for this amount of money, we're gonna have that at the salary. I think in the long range, in long range, it's only the cost of a county lawyer.
Well, I, I actually had that same question for the sheriff. And as we talked about it, it kinda made a lot of sense, because if you think about it, it's sort of like we do with the teachers a few years ago, we gave an early out option or retirement option for the teachers. Well, some of those teachers that left were making at the top end of the salary, who would you hiring in, you're, you're saving a tremendous amount of difference in what happens with that. Uh, Jeff said that this will actually impact the zero fee. There's only a couple of people that are getting close to it. And the good part about this, I was able to get Justin, I told him to, whatever he could do to, uh, delay the mandatory retirement, put that in there. He gave us eighteen months. So if this passes, as is written, it will go into effect January first of this coming year and it will be July first, a year and a half later before the first person's mandatory retirement. So it gives them a, a time to plan and everything else. So along the same lines, is it going to decimate us? Jeff said it's the best recruiting tool we can have, because it's gonna still let, let people know that you're gonna be able to retire, a healthy retirement, you're gonna be able to have a living retirement. And with, with me, when I was hired as an air traffic, I was talking to the guy the very first day, he goes, well, so have you been planning for your retirement? And I said, this is my first day? He goes, you wait till tomorrow, it's too late. So, but, so this, this is for new hires coming in, they're, they're gonna, and they're gonna have the time to do that. So I was concerned, but I, he, he was very confident that it actually is a good thing and it's not lying to him.
So Jeff, I wonder how many officers he's short now, you know?
The last time I heard, they were at, at full, I think they were really close to being full, they had a couple in the corrections, I believe, maybe less than ten, I think. But I think that they're doing really well. Yeah, they're doing really well. But he also said that this will help him and in fact, it might actually, some of the surrounding places that don't have a bridge program, they might decide that Sullivan County's a great place to come spend their last few years and you get some experienced officers and stuff, go experience.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. I'm in full support of this. My dad helped out with Bristol when they implemented this with fire departments and it, I mean, I think he said, when the men were put to a vote, it was almost unanimous for one person against. I mean, it was, everyone said this was great, it gave opportunity for advancement for younger, uh, firefighters and, and he could, I mean, you get, in certain career lines like this, you get to a certain age and you might not, I'm not gonna say he couldn't do the job, I'm just saying you get to a certain age and you might not be as effective. So this gives that out and you get a younger officer in there who can run someone down or, uh, firefighter who can carry someone out. I, I'm just, I'm all for this, like I said, he, he praised it up and down and it in Bristol, so I'm all for it.
Chairman, protest Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna add one other benefit to this resolution that Andrew kinda hit on it, but I think it gets people off of the street at an age when they don't need to be on the street. We can all think of the case a few years back where maybe there's an officer out there that shouldn't have been there. Uh, and if you go into this job knowing that you've got a mandatory retirement age, you're gonna plan for it, you're gonna be ready to retire when the time comes. going to plan for it, you're going to be ready to retire when the time comes, so that's a big benefit I see to it, is just getting maybe people out of harm's way before it's too late, so just think about that, please.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on the resolution?
Just to add two real quick things, and I'll leave it alone. The first one is exactly what Zane said, there was a study back, and that's the reason air traffic was at 56 retirement, they said that your reflexes start diminishing at 56, and it makes it to where any little difference as far as you're delayed, or, you know, I mean, it's, it can be tragic. So it's, it helps them not have to be in a put-in-out position. The other question has been asked several times, as far as, how about EMS? Can we add EMS? The answer's no. Checked on that because I thought it was a fantastic idea. Very amazed, we had the conversation earlier today, and Hunter Locke actually asked me the same question. So I asked it with Justin, he said, this is specifically for public safety, it's only for police officers, corrections, and firefighters. For some reason, those three are the only ones that are impacted or affected. If it expands, I'll be the first one to jump on board because I'd love to say that for them as well, but this has the full support of everybody that's going to be impacted by this, being the sheriff's office, and I hope you guys can support it.
You have one more for public comment. Commissioner Ward, questions or comments?
Thanks, sir. To answer one of Joyce's questions, what a great recruiting tool this is for the sheriff's department. When a young kid comes in out of the academy and he sees that he can do 25 years and leave, unfortunately, the 56-year-old losing a second year in reaction can cost you your life, so unfortunately, we've been there, Sullivan County has, we don't want to be there again. I know there's a lot of guys at the sheriff's department that are all for this. Will it create a need for a job? It's going to give some older guys a chance to retire, that's going to create openings for younger guys to come in. Some of these guys have to stick around a little bit longer because they haven't been prepared for retirement. This will help them, and when those older guys leave, it creates an opportunity to bring in newer guys. So, yes, we lose officers, but we gain new officers. Law enforcement is a young man's game. Do I jump out of my vehicle and chase them anymore? No, I drive alongside of them. This is a great recruiting tool. If you look on the back, that last page, some of the cities and counties that use this, I mean, everybody around us is pretty much using it but us. So it's a great tool for Sheriff Cassidy to recruit new, young officers.
Commissioner Irison, give you a last word on resolution, sir.
Hopefully, some of you like this and would like to participate as far as a co-sponsor group, we'll talk about it again on Thursday. I'm just giving a motion.
Sponsor rolls out of item number two to our next full commission meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Irison on resolution number three.
Sorry. This is one that I actually spoke about at the budget committee meeting, I've talked to a couple of different times about this, so hopefully, we won't give all the money to Matthew Johnson, because there'll be things like this that comes along that we really like to participate in. But at the same time, if we do, I'm sure I can go to Matthew and say, this is a great idea, and we'll go that direction. But, a new airline approached the airport and said, we would like to have you as the third leg of the stool. It's going to be, it's under a confidentiality thing right now because it's a, it's a very competitive market, and we're trying to get a new airline to come into Tri-City, but a lot of the other airports in the United States are trying to do the same thing. So we can't say too much. As a matter of fact, it's going to be annoying how little I can say. So, it will, it will be three airports. One of them is in a colder climate up north, and one is in a warmer climate down south, and that's pretty much all I can say, except for, in my former life, we had what they're called the top 30, so 30 busiest airports in the nation. And this adds two of those. Right now, we have one to Atlanta, we have one to Charlotte, we have one to Dallas. Those are the three top 30 airports that we actually have. This will add two more. Very great areas, it's going to be great for tourism, it's going to be great for us going to have international travel, and being able to go to places, going to be able to get on an airplane, go somewhere else. This company wants to come in here, but they also want to get a revenue guarantee. They say that over the next two years, they want to be able to break even, and to do that, they say it's going to be $2 million is what they're expecting, is thinking that's going to cost them to do this. They are going to take every dollar they make off of that. So at the very first, we will most likely have to spend some money. It ends up being $84,000 a month, but that's also with all the partners around us. So Sullivan County is one of the owners of the airport, both Kingsport, Bristol, Johnson City, Bristol, Virginia, Washington County, Sullivan County, so we're one of the owners. So, in my mind, I was like, if we take our fair share, it'd be $10,000, and there are going to have some other businesses actually participating in this. At the very first, we may actually take up to $10,000, as the resolution says, for the first couple of months until they get seats being filled. It'll eventually go down to where the airline's making money, and then we owe nothing. We will break even, we don't pay them. If they, if they make the money, we don't put anything in. What it's going to do for our area is, the more competition you have, the prices go down. People won't drive to Asheville, drive to Knoxville, they'll fly to Tri-City because the prices will be lower. More people will be able to fly in, it's going to help tourism in that direction. So, this is, in my mind, one of the best things we can possibly do for tourism with our tourism dollars. I spoke with the mayor, I don't know if it was in his mouth, but we're both on Airport Authority, and it is a great thing. Sam was on Airport Authority as well, I've talked with him. It is a wonderful use of our money, it's going to come back and help everybody that flies out of our airport, which is all our citizens in city and county, it's going to save them money because the prices will go down, it's going to add options for us, and I hope you guys can support it. It is absolutely fantastic. The problem I have is, I'm going to have to put this on waiver of rules, and the reason for that is that we have to be able to tell them by December 4th if we're going to be able to help that or not. So they, all the entities of the airport has to be able to tell this airline, yes, we can or we can't. So December 4th is the deadline, so we'll be coming back next week on waiver of rules. Again, I hope you guys can support it, and the same thing for that, if anyone wants to be participating in that, as far as a co-sponsor, I appreciate that, and I'd love to have you on there. Great for questions.
You've heard the explanation on item number three. Floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Ward.
So I understood that right, that tourism dollars can be used towards that.
Yes. It's up to $10,000 tourism dollars as well. Oh, and I should have said, I apologize, if this actually happens, the service won't start until May, the first dollar will be spent, it'll be June. So it's not like it's saying, maybe it's going to be coming to a fast, so.
Commissioner Crosslight.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is, if this original hotel motel tax passes, this $10,000, will that be coming out of what's left in Sullivan County Matthews?
No, because mine goes before this next week. This was number two, and that's number eight, so I'll spend the money first. We'll have to figure that out. I mean, it's going to, it's going to be the semantics of where it comes from, but as of right now, this, the commission has the only authority to spend that money right now. If we decided to do something else, like we're talking about, and then it would have to be going to one of the other entities that has the money at that point. So if we have something that comes as an opportunity, we'll have a different person to go to. So it'll need to be Matthew.
The only reason I ask that, I mean, if this passes and we give net half of money, then I think they ought to pay half of this, too, so.
I mean, that's, that's, that's going to be something we'll have to figure out as far as that goes, because like I say, we won't pay the first penny until June.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just got a couple more questions. Number one, if the deal falls through, do we get our money back?
We don't spend a penny.
You don't spend that? Okay.
Yeah, we won't spend a penny. So if they, if they deny us or go somewhere else, we never spend a penny.
Awesome. The other one is, the other owners of the airport, where are they at on backing us with this?
I hope we're first.
Okay, okay, and then they'll follow us?
I hope so.
All right. Thank you.
That clears the board. Commissioner Irison will move waiver of rules on item number three at next week's full commission meeting. Thank you. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Crosslight on item number four.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is a grant from the Department of Agriculture, and it's for the animal shelter for spading and neutering community pets. It's $1,200, and if you all want to break down how much it costs, the spade or neuter a cat right now, Sullivan County, $65, dogs are $80, and that does include a rabies. So this grant's on for lifelong. Community cats, any of those community cats, you can get them spayed or neutered for $20, and this stays for Sullivan County. So this grant will help, this will help our animals get spayed and neutered. So, I'd like to, and they'll keep up with the expenses, but I might put this on consent agenda, so they can go ahead and get it started.
You've heard the explanation on item number four. Sponsor moves consent calendar. Is there any objection to item number four being placed on our proposed consent calendar next week? Floor is open for discussion. I'm asking Commissioner Glover.
Is there any matching funds on this, Joyce?
No.
No matching funds on it? Okay. How did they decide to make that money coming back to the county? I mean, how was this grant provided?
Well, the county, Department of Agriculture, so it really helps our county that it's a grant, so.
Did they specify it had to be used for spading and neutering? Okay, okay. All right, that's all right.
Do you hear your motion for consent?
Yes, please, I'd like to have this on consent.
Without objection, item number four is placed on consent calendar. Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on item number five.
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution is to prep rate funds for the Sullivan County Industrial Development Board to replace the entrance sign at the Tri-County Industrial Park. Our sign that is at present at the industrial park is, they say it's 40 years old, and yours were more like 85 or 60 years old. But anyway, it's in bad shape, there's been vines growing on the back of it all summer, and I've talked to the place several times about what we can do about it. But anyway, the Tri-County Industrial Park, when they sell money, they put this money into funds to help with the maintenance of the park and also further development of the park. And we put out bids for a sign, design and bids for the sign, and if you'll turn over about three or four pages, you'll see a rendering from Snyder's sign design to have the, to got the bid to do the sign, and that would be what the new sign would look like. And we went through the crease of the office, I don't know how many bid on it, but Snyder was the lowest and best bid. They put $125,000 out of this fund to go towards building this sign and also landscaping and maintenance of it in the future, so. Again, we're not taking any funds from the general fund, this is going to be funds from that pool of money that, to build that, and I think it's just something that needs to be done for our industrial park. When you come in, you know, it's kind of bad for Sullivan County to have a industrial park with a sign that looks like that, and just, you know, make it look better for the entrance of our park, and I hope everybody can support this, and I'd like to put it on waiver of the rules. Reason why is, we need to go ahead and get this thing, if we pass it, go ahead and get it started and get it done before bad weather, you know, so that we won't be building in January or February or something like that, so.
You've heard the explanation on item number five. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Irison.
Two questions for you. It says it's to supplement the demolition, does that mean it's coming somewhere else or this won't completely do it?
We're going to ask the owners of the industrial park to donate some money.
Okay.
And this thing got done before we got that part of it, so hopefully, we're going to get some money from our partners, you know, the owners of the park, and I'm sure they will, it's just a matter of how much and, and, so we wanted to get this thing going and get the sign up, and then we'll do fundraisers or whatever to get money to put back if we need to. So, but $125,000 is what it is, and the money's there, and then, you know, we'll ask the owners of the, of the park. A lot of times, you got to go to, you know, headquarters, and there's somewhere else, and it just takes time to get the money collected, but that's something that, you know, we are going to.
Second question for you. How much is in that fund?
I don't know.
Okay.
I hadn't asked, I don't know.
You're probably, I just kind of curious, I mean, it's $125, I'm moving. Is it? Okay.
I'm sure, you know, Floyd would have that figure, I don't know.
Commissioner Irison.
So, I mean, the $125,000 we're approving, it's going to be moved from where? From us? From where?
No.
It's from that?
See, where the fund is in the account.
Right.
On the first paragraph, you'll be coming out of that account.
Okay. So is that county money? Or is that?
It's, it's where we've sold property.
Right.
Yeah.
Out of industrial park, they took proceeds from that, I think, but in a fund to help maintain it and, and then promote it.
So it's, so we actually control it?
Yes.
Okay, got you. All right, thanks.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, we have money in the account, I'd like to be a co-sponsor on that as an industrial, a member of the industrial development board. You know, we have, the money's in, in the account, we just have to give approval. But the board has already approved it as a board, asked the commissioners in that area to waive the resolution.
You don't have much money in that account?
No, because it changes.
It changes, I know, as money comes in and goes out, I don't know. All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Commissioner King, what's your desire on item number five, sir?
Waiver of rules.
Commissioner King will move waiver of rules on item number five at next week's scheduled commission meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on item number six.
Okay, this resolution, a month or so ago, we had a resolution that we passed that would accept funds from the Department of Energy for energy efficiency, and through a block grant, and we got it, and now, we've got the money, and now this is to say we can go ahead and spend it. And we're going to spend it on insulation at the, at our campus up here, the school, the local school building, we're going to say $78,000 for insulation in the, in the old school.
You've heard the explanation on item number six. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seek recognition on item number six? Commissioner King, what's your desire on item number six?
Waiver of rules.
Commissioner King, move item number six, waiver of rules, we heard at next week's scheduled commission meeting next Thursday.
We need to get it down as quick as we can, that's all we got.
It's up to the sponsor.
Would that be eligible for consent?
Well, that's got money.
It's like the general fund, the grant.
That's up, that's, it's up to the sponsor.
What's the consent thing? The consent.
Without objection, sponsor moves consent calendar on item number six. Without objection, recognize Commissioner King on item number seven.
All right. In the Honey Flats Industrial Park, we've got a, a private industry out there, it's line roofing, they sell metal roofing, and they've got a facility there that they are renting right now. They also have another facility on Highway 118, and what they're wanting to do is purchase 28 acres that, there's a map here that shows, well, actually, there's a topo, and then there's a map also, it's up behind their present, where they are doing business now, and what they're wanting is for Sullivan County to submit a state industrial access road. And what they're wanting is for Sullivan County to submit a state industrial access road grant application to, on behalf of Sullivan County. And what that would do, if they get larger and increase the amount of employees that they've got, this is done across the state. The state will build a road into the property to have access. And that's what we're asking here. And if they do that, they will design it and also construct it. So the state will. And this is something that would help make sure that he buys it and builds the building and he's probably, he's got six or eight locations now. But that's his main location right now. But, and he's outgrowing it. And, you know, everybody knows what metal roofing and how it's grown and stuff. So he's, but he's got, I think he's got six or eight different locations in this, I think, in maybe three states. So, but he just needs a bigger building and he's expanding and probably will provide more employment for people to work there. So I would ask everybody to support this and let's get it done. We could go ahead and, so we can get the grant in, do it on waiver of rules also.
You've heard the explanation on item number seven. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Jones.
Dwight, I'd like to be a co-sponsor on this. It's coming from networks and there's no money involved. Networks would, I'll speak as for my seat, put it on consent.
Everybody's agreeable. We'll put it on consent.
Sponsor moves consent calendar for item number seven. Any objection to item number seven being placed on consent calendar? Without objection, item number seven is placed on proposed consent calendar. Without objection, already done eight. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Irson on item number nine.
My, my back got heavy over here carrying all the load over here.
I tell you, I tell you what I mean.
My commissioner over here, he didn't help me a bit.
You're about out of breath.
I'm about out of breath.
I just feel I've made other projects.
Quantity over quality, quality in quantity. I understand. Commissioner Irson.
So this past year, the General Assembly was putting together legislation to, they increased the amount of hours the county commissioners have to get for their training. And they were actually looking at how they were going to get the county commissioners to all, get all the training that was out there required. So I heard the explanation that we're going to try the carrot before the club and this was the carrot. So they basically passed legislation this past year to go from seven hours of training a year to eight hours of training a year. But they also put it in there for us to do a stipend for paying for us to get that training, taking time out of town, going out and doing all these different things. So they ran it through the Education Committee, through the TCCA, the box chair of that group. So they asked me, would you take it to your county? I says, I'll take it to them. If it passes, great. If it doesn't, that's okay too. But at least we'll say that we, as a group, decided that that's something that we want to do. The money does come from our county. They put it out there that you can do it, but it comes from us, not from them. So this is money to go to the commissioners for getting the training that we're supposed to be getting and required training. But it allows you to get compensated from your time out of town and whatever you're going to do with that. So, any other questions?
You've heard the explanation on item number nine. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Glover on item number nine.
I think it will pass. I don't even make a comment on this.
Recognize Commissioner Cross.
My question's not about the resolution, but about the M D I. I had to use the rest of my staff back in late. And I remember this from a couple of years ago or last year or so. Can someone clarify for me, please, with this training? Because some, I know Commissioner Cole was before this came along and he was exempted from this. Or he was elected before this came to pass. And I had to turn in some things, but I did it about, it has to be turned in so often. I'm just a little fuzzy on exactly what that training is.
So my understanding, I think I'm right on this, but my understanding is if you're a commissioner less than eight years, you have to get this training.
Yes.
The controller keeps track of this training. They posted on the website if you did or if you did not get this training. So there's a paper trail of all this. And that's why the legislation is saying, the legislature, I should say, is saying, we're going to have to do something about it if you don't. And they're encouraging the people to do it now. And this was their carrot before the club.
Yeah, okay. Well, once again, sorry to go off topic on that. I was still fuzzy because when I called in one time to them, it was fuzzy, even the people that gave me the information of, well, you need to do this. And I didn't say what if I don't. I simply asked. So where, you know, how do I go about this? Where do I go? And they said, well, don't, we'll clarify that. It was kind of fuzzy from the beginning for me. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Cross, what?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm like, Mr. Glover, I really don't want to say this, but this is part of our job when we're elected, is to get this training. And as far as I know, if you don't have it, it shows up on our audit report at the end of the year. So I'm not for this. I mean, we get, we get mileage, we get our, we get everything paid for for we go. So why should we take six hundred dollars out of the county fund for something that we were elected to do?
Commissioner Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So is this six hundred dollars per year?
Per commissioner, per year.
Per commissioner, per year. So if all twenty-four of us did that, that's fourteen thousand four hundred dollars a year. So per one commission term, that's fifty-seven thousand six hundred dollars. And my own committee, the administrative committee personally, we've, you know, we've cut people's funding for, you know, less than that. So I don't think I can support this.
That clears the board. Commissioner Irson, what's your desire for the resolution?
I guess we'll talk about it next, we'll talk about it next week. And I'm going to go ahead and go forward and we'll look at it next week.
Commissioner Irson moves item number nine to our next scheduled commission meeting next Thursday. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Means on item number ten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a resolution to accept funds and appropriate funds for Sullivan County Sheriff's Office for the Justice Programs received through the State of Tennessee Mental Health Transport Fund Grant Application. This is just grant money, just showing that we are approving that. There's no matching funds. And I'd like to place it on consent calendar. Not any questions?
You've heard the explanation on item number ten. Sponsor moves consent calendar on item number ten. Any objection to item number ten being placed on consent calendar? Without objection, item number ten is placed on proposed consent calendar. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Means on item number eleven.
Again, this is the same type of situation. Resolution to recognize and appropriate additional funds from the State of Tennessee to fund a second eight-hundred-dollar salary supplement for post-certified officers in the amount of hundred and two thousand four hundred dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, with no matching funds. So again, I'm just asking that we put this on consent calendar.
You've heard the explanation on item number eleven. Sponsor moves consent calendar on item number eleven. Any objection to item number eleven being placed on consent calendar? Without objection, item number eleven is placed on proposed consent calendar. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Glover on item number twelve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to authorize Sullivan County Attorney Master, Sullivan County Chancery Court to enter into a contract with the G U B dot auction LLC for an online auction for the post delinquent tax sales. She came to our finance meeting last month and explained to us about this and how it would be better for her to put this on and move things a little faster for her and make it a little easier. It passed the Finance Committee. Mr. Crawford, he's supposed to be a co-sponsor on here too. I'd like to have him on as a co-sponsor. But it did pass the Finance Committee with the fine colors. Under the contract, G U B dot auction, LLC agrees to provide a host server and software for the online auction website, which will replace a live public auction. And we'll list the delinquent tax property provided by Sullivan County Chancery Court along with supporting documents, tax records, G I S M E Ps, and maintain a register of vendors. It was a pretty good deal. And the way it was explained to us, I don't think we have to pay anything. That money comes out of who's buying the, or who's paying for the delinquent taxes or whatever. So it's no, it's no money out of the account.
You've heard the explanation. The floor is open for discussion on item number twelve. Commissioner Glover, what's your?
I'd like to put this on the seat for her, please.
Sponsor moves consent calendar for item number twelve. Any objection to item number twelve being placed on proposed consent calendar? Without objection, item number twelve is placed on proposed consent calendar. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Cross, what on item number thirteen?
Thank you, Chairman. This resolution was authorizing matching funds awarded from two thousand and eighteen for access grant from the Tennessee Department of Transportation. And this is for phase one for better want to connecting the county seat. And this is for, in other words, new sidewalks. And it started out that the overall grant request was nine hundred ninety-nine thousand one hundred twenty dollars. Funding from the state was nine forty-nine one sixty-four. And the remaining match was five percent, which was forty-nine nine fifty-six. The county commission actually approved this in two thousand and nineteen. So now we're down to, we've got the approval letters from right away, we've done Amber's office, they've done paperwork. Right now, we're at a total cost of four hundred thirty-five thousand five hundred forty-three dollars. The state will match ninety-five percent, which is four hundred thirteen seven sixty-five eighty-five. And we will need to do a five percent match of twenty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven and fifteen dollars to finish this project. And I'd like to put it on waiver of rules.
You've heard the explanation on item number thirteen. The floor is open for discussion. Anyone seek recognition for discussion on item number thirteen? Commissioner Buck.
Mr. Cross, what was that, twenty-one thousand seven hundred seventy-seven? Is that coming out of general funds? Is that where you're going to take it from?
Yeah, it's more like that's Larry, but I imagine it came out of general funds.
How much did we take out there before to do the first phase of this?
Well, we haven't really done a phase. This is the first phase. We're just now getting all the regulations that we needed to do it. It was going to be forty-nine nine fifty-six. That was our five percent match. But again, the commission passed that in two thousand and nineteen through that. Thank you.
Commissioner Cross, what?
And again, I'd like for this to be on waiver of rules, please.
Sponsor will move waiver of rules on item number thirteen at next Thursday's full county commission meeting. Without objection, recognize Commissioner Jones on item fourteen.
This resolution should authorize the mayor to send a letter of intent to T V Tennessee Valley Authority expressing Sullivan County's interest in extending for thirty years the county's easement from the T V A. Call observation, not part. It's been before the, our committee, we recommended this. The, we're, even though the contract doesn't run out till next July, we're, sooner than later is what T V A said. They want a letter because we start into a new year. And they would like to have that recommendation or that intent letter after they do the inspection. You know, we've got two weeks to prepare the campground. They come in, do inspections. They want to know that we're going to be willing to operate. And in that, we would, if you'll see further down in the last, we're as, they have also asked us to exclude the four-twenty-one boat grant. We've never really done anything out there, even though it's been in the original contract. And in that area, they have expressed that there's, there may be some, T W R A might be willing, but we can't, we can't get involved in that. Actually, I take that out of contract. There are some damages out there to the dock that they're willing to accept. We don't have to be involved in that. And I know Commissioner Hayes, that's where he, he puts his boat in that and he was fine with it when T V A said to take it up. So I'd like to put that on the consent calendar. There's no money involved. It's just our expressing our will, our desire to go ahead and move forward.
You've heard the explanation on item number fourteen. Sponsor moves consent calendar. The floor is open for discussion. Recognize Commissioner Irson on item number fourteen, please.
I'll make a quick comment, but I've got a question for you first. Now, the last one was fifty years and this one's thirty. Why would we?
He's asking you a question, Commissioner Jones.
So the original was a fifty-year contract. Why don't we just do a thirty this time? Was that them or is that us that decided thirty?
That was, that was their discussion. And they, they're not doing those long-term. I know Campbell County, after us, they did the longer. But they're not wanting to go that far into again.
That's fair. And I'm just, this commission, I know when we got together first, it was probably the hottest topic we had was observation of. And it seems like everything out there is doing really well now. So I'm glad we haven't heard anything about it. It seemed like we've been doing a lot of good stuff. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Means.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Jones, the issue I have with this is that, that we had the issues in the past. Thankfully, things are going better. But I remember, if I recall, we were kind of trapped into a situation with T V A and we weren't able to do things more freely because of that agreement. So because of the, of being so enslaved by such an agreement, I just, I can't support this. Because I want freedom for Sullivan County to be able to do something down the road in the future and not have to be dealing with such a thing.
Well, I guess my response to you would be that this is the only vacation property that Sullivan County actually operates for our citizens. And we are under the new management we have out there. Things have increased tremendously. We used to be closed down. Now we're open year-round. In fact, we just found six more spaces that we had water that was available. So we've got those six, six more spaces available. And through a program that he has instituted on a national level, and I'm not sure, it's kind of like the Good Sound Travel Program. The people are kind of traveling through here and stopping and using, spending money in our area and using the campground. So our, our income, I should have had that for you and I, and I will have it next Thursday. But we are doing exceptionally well. And now we're getting ready to move forward with the grant that we have. And if we don't move forward with this, the state will pull that grant and we'll never, ever get another grant like that again. That's create the trails and to be developed out there. That's four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant.
So are you saying that the campground and what's going on up there hinges on this agreement with T V A?
Absolutely. They, they own the land. We don't own the land. We're the management of it. But we get proceeds from it that come back to the county.
Okay.
I do have a map. I don't have it put on the screen, but... All right, George, you go. This, yeah. There is a small, this small section is what we're deleting out. Over here is our, the park as it actually operates. But the trail that'll be coming will come all the way down and come out down to the here. Now I've got a second resolution coming up about the end of that.
Commissioner Jones, since you entered the map in, in the meeting, you have a copy for Teresa.
We have, this is how the official meeting.
Okay.
I'll give it to Teresa.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say I'm very supportive of the significant improvements that have been made at Observation Knob Park over the past two years. And I've personally visited the park several times. And manager Chris Burkey has been very gracious to answer all of my questions and allow me to tour the campground. And I appreciate the diligence that Chris has shown to operate this campground in the black and to provide a positive experience to the community and to the campers. However, before approving a lengthy extension to this proposed lease agreement, I believe we need to look more closely to the existing contract with the Intermont Utility District, which provides water service to Observation Knob Park. If we fail to take this window of opportunity to renegotiate the contract now, we will likely lose any leverage in negotiating the contract that ends in the middle of the newly proposed 30-year contract. Looking back at the water charges since 2015, Sullivan County's base rate, which is the minimum payment that we make regardless of whether we use that amount of water or not, has increased every year, going from approximately $2,400 per month to nearly $4,000 per month. This represents a near 64% increase over nine years. If we use more water than the minimum, this charge is actually added on top of the base rate. And while the minimum usage rate did not increase in 2024, the rate for the water per 100 gallons increased from 1098 to 1175, an additional 7% increase. The existing contract states that if rates increase, the district shall hold a public hearing on proposed monthly user charges, and each customer shall be afforded an opportunity of inquiry and suggestion. The question is, was Sullivan County notified of these public hearings over the past nine years? Or were they only sent a letter informing them of the rate increases? To my knowledge, the district has not held these public meetings, as stated in the contract, to voice our concerns and objections. And it is clear that the existing contract with the minimum usage charge takes an unfair advantage of Observation Knob's park being closed, at least it was, for nearly half the calendar year. Yet Sullivan County is still required to pay a full minimum usage fee for little to no water during the five to six months that the park is, has been closed. My calculations show that we have overpaid the district many thousands of dollars over the past 25 years for water services that we definitely did not use. Now is the right time to renegotiate this contract in order for the county to pay only for the water that Observation Knob Park is using on a monthly basis. This is a reasonable, common sense request, and one that aligns with our responsibility as commissioners to be accountable to taxpayers, ensuring that their tax dollars are being spent fairly and appropriately. Again, if we do not attempt to renegotiate this contract now, when the contract ends in 13 years, we will be in the middle of this newly proposed lease agreement, and our leverage to negotiate at that time will essentially be gone.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate if the commissioners will consider this before approving this extension.
All right.
Please excuse Commissioner...
Commissioner Harvey had to step away a second.
I need to respond. This has, that water agreement has nothing to do with the TBA contract. That is something that we're making our obligations. Yeah, I think it was a bad contract as far as the water, the water district and that. But that, TBA has nothing to do with what we've done in our agreement with them. That's totally outside the TBA agreement. That's all we're working on right now. That, that would be something that we'd have to come up separately and not part of this TBA agreement.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll go with the speak request as, as an order here. Commissioner Pierce?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just wanted to ask about the boat launch fee that will be lost. How much money?
We, that's, what we're cutting out is not, it's a free dock. We don't get any launch fee from that.
We haven't been receiving any launch...
No, no, that's, that's, it's, even it was in our original contract. We never did anything with it, maintained it. It was, actually, TBA did it. They're asking us to cut it out so they can work on it. But that's a free launch rate. Ours is...
And so it's been that way, though?
It's been that way for 50 years. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Carr, I skipped you.
Yeah, it's okay. I'll, I'll forgive you this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Protown. Nice ring to it. You know, there's been so much controversy and so much smoke swirling around this park that I don't think we should rush back into a 30-year lease with it. I think we should do, do our due diligence on this. I'd like to have the comptroller audit their budget before we proceed with this. I object to having it on consent.
Thank you, Commissioner Carr. The chair would recognize County Attorney Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to speak in support of what Commissioner Harvey said. The water utility bill at that park has been an issue that surfaces quite often, and I think it would be a good time to take a look at that.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Commissioner Sligell, you recognize?
Thank you, Chairman Protown. Two days ago, Observation Knob posted about the boat ramp. You can use the ramp for $3 entry fee anytime you wish. So I guess it's not a free access to Archie's point. So are we going to, are we going to amend that?
That's a separate ramp.
Okay. Just want to get clarity.
Commissioner Jones, you recognize?
We have a boat ramp inside the park that is fenced in area, and it provides a secure, lighted parking place. We just installed a new ramp out there last year. But we, we are doing a lot of tournaments, and he can schedule these tournaments for this coming year till we get this letter. That's one of the, all the events that were scheduled that we've been doing, we're kind of on hold to do those. The voters that I've talked to, boat clubs that use that parking inside and pay the fee, they like it because it is secure. The one that's, we're cutting out that we've never used, that's an open area. There's a lot of damage to trailers and boats that are over there. We don't want that responsibility. We want to get rid of it. So we've never, that's never been anything but a liability for the county. But yeah, there is, you can buy an annual permit, or you pay $3 every day you come in and out. So there's, you know, that's an income for the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Thank you, Commissioner. We've got two more speak requests, and we'll give you the last word in just a second. Commissioner Means?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so Commissioner Jones, my, my thought is not to kick the can down the road for another commission down the road. I'm just, maybe something similar to what Commissioner Harvey is talking about. Maybe if we, could we look at purchasing that property?
Commissioner King, I think I skipped you earlier. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chairman Protem. Sam, how's the finances? Are we in the black? If we had to take anything out of the county to support it, why not?
We have discussed making an enterprise fund. They're doing so well.
Okay. And I guess my other... And I had the same thought, Ms. Harvey. I think right now would be the time to negotiate that water. I know it don't have anything to do with this contract. I know that. I know it 100%. But if you're sitting at the table, and they're sitting over there looking at you, and you say, "Well, if you don't do this, we may not even have to do the parking here." That's a leverage, is all that is. And that's the time to do it. Because if you wait till you sign the contract, you don't have that leverage. That's my only deal. So I think somebody, the mayor, or the board, or somebody needs to go to that utility district and talk to them and say, you know, "This is what we want to do. Yes, this is a brand-new deal. We're signing a new contract with TBA, and we want a brand-new contract. And this is what we're willing to do." I'm not on that board. I've got plenty of work left to do. Whoever's on the board responsible for it needs to do a thing, whether that's the mayor, or the board, or somebody's department. And somebody needs to go to at least talk to them about this contract with utilities. We're paying, oh, what, $48,000 a year for water?
But we use a lot of water out there. All these campers use a lot of water. Yeah, it is a high rate, but we have to provide it to the campers. That's our... As part of the deal, which we provide each water, electricity for their...
I agree, and I agree with that. But I just think if we're ever going to do anything, now's the time to do it. If not, we'll just forget it and keep paying.
Commissioner Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The water is a big issue. Because let me explain to you why. That's only water excess the campers has got. So if we don't work something out now, if we sign the agreement and don't work something out, that's all probably got. If we're going to sign a 30-year deal, or what... I'm on a five-year plan of what our future is, five years up there. Before we sign anything, I want to see a five-year plan. I want to see what we're going to do this coming year, the next year, and the year after. I want to see on paper what the plans are out there. I've heard about this grant, and I've heard about this grant, and I've heard about it, and I ain't seen nothing yet. And I want something confirmed. I want to see a five-year plan before we obligate the Sullivan County taxpayers to a 30-year agreement. And we need to invite the Intermark Utility. They need to come to the table. Either the mayor needs to go see them, or they need to come here. He's always said he's ones over the park. So he needs to step up and sit down with Intermark Utility and work out the water problem. I'm not voting for anything that obligates Sullivan County taxpayers for 30 years unless I see something in writing before it's going to cut us at least five years from now. So that's more on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Glover. Commissioner Calton, you're recognized.
Thank you, Protem. First comment is, it's in the black. For the last three years, or is it four, maybe kind of January that we had a new manager? And this is not exact, but that park has made, I think, near $500,000. No, I'm talking about this year, not what we give back to the county, but... Yeah, not profit, not profit. It's brought in that much, $500,000. And it has profit for the last three years. So that's three of your years, Commissioner Glover. It's really improved. But I mean, he's got a lot of things going on there.
Thank you, Commissioner Calton. Commissioner Means.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. I guess what I would say, Commissioner Carlton, is that I think it's great that it's been in the black, but it's not all about just being in the black. This is about being fiscally conservative with taxpayer dollars and doing the right thing and having the right business deal on the table. And that's what we're all here for. So that's great that it's in the black. That means we're doing something right, and we're just... I think we're all okay with this because we've come to a good place. We just want to make sure it keeps going in that right trajectory. So if we're all on the team like this, on having a five-year plan, like Commissioner Glover said, I think that does nothing but make it even better. So I'm right there with the point. Thank you.
Mr. Calton, you want a response?
My comment is Sullivan County residents, they never had an opportunity to use this park, and they are so pleased that we have our own park. So this is taxpayers' money, though it also makes profit, and it's for the residents of Sullivan County. I mean, a lot, way more than we wish to have. So it's for the residents.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Slagel?
Yeah, just briefly. I mean, you know, it's a great top line, but we really focus on the bottom line. It's really what matters, and I'm glad it's in the black. At a minimum, I think we should have an audit of the monthly water consumption and the water bill charts. Pretty simple math, I think. So we need to make sure that the campground's not being leveraged for water. It's not being used. Sullivan County's paying for it. We just need to make sure it's funded. I don't know the best way to run it that. Might be the Attorney Street and the mayor, but at a minimum, we need to do some checks and balances and trust and verify.
I'll be calm. Commissioner Jones, you want to add one or do you want to move on to item 15?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, we waited a little bit late for this, and the contracts for next year for the boat tournaments and the water dog and national event that we are doing and other events are kind of hinging on being able to sign those contracts, whether we tell TBA that we're going to move forward and operate. These are... You know, and I'm just saying from TBA, they need to know if we're going to by the end of the year. They got to have that. And I believe, Joe, the Commissioner, that the comptroller is not part of our audit that we do?
Yes.
Mr. Baby, so the comptroller includes that. That's included in the audit that we do every year. And, you know, that's taken care of as far as you're concerned about being audited.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I still move forward with waiver of rules.
Waiver of rules. Sponsor request waiver of rules on next week's calendar. I'd like to recognize County Attorney Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say again, I think this is a great time to look at that water contract. It comes up every so often. I was here when the first... When the contract was negotiated. It was actually used to improve the water delivery system in that area. So it was kind of like a community project. They improved their water system. The park was able to benefit from it, but Sullivan County also considered it to help the people that lived in that area. But that was now 20-some years ago. And I'm not going to comment on whether we're getting a good deal or a bad deal, but every time I look at it, it just looks like it needs to be given another look because I think we're still subsidizing that area. Now, if you want to subsidize that area, fine, but I'm like, what was just said. All we want to know is what's going on, and then we can decide whether we like it or not. But anyway, what I want to say is now is the time to do that. If you sign a 30-year lease on that park, you're kind of over a barrel after that.
Thank you, County Attorney. We'll move on to item 15. Commissioner Jones?
As part of the design of the trail, and that's part of the five-year plan, Commissioner Glover, the... There is a trail that goes and comes out on Highway 421. This walking trail that's part of that money we received. TBA is shipping gates to close that out. It's an area that they'd like to see closed out because there's activity that goes on there that needs Sheriff's Department to oversight. I'm not going to get into specifics, but they want to close it out. They're going to pay for it. In fact, the gates are being shipped here. We're working with the park staff, and I've talked to Scott at the Highway Department to get things put in and then to get some larger rocks to help block the rest of access. So that... All this is doing is just put to some consent for us to set those gates that TBA is shipping here to help protect our part of the park.
You've heard the explanation on item number 15. Sponsor moves consent counter on item number 15. Is there any objection to item number 15 being placed on the consent counter? Commissioner Slagel objects to item number 15 being placed on consent counter.
So put in waiver of rules.
Sponsor moves waiver of rules for item number 15 on next week's... Sponsor moves item number 15 off the waiver of rules on next week's county commission, full county commission agenda. Item number 16 is actually a duplicate of item number 13, so we can move on to item number 17. Recognize Commissioner Calton on item numbers... Where's that, Ierson? Did I get that reversed? Recognize Commissioner Ierson on item number 17.
So in 2013, we gave $30,000 to the property assessor's office, and I guess, I'm not sure the exact number we gave, but there's $30,000 that was unspent, and they failed to put it in their budget. They're just asking to increase their budget by that same $30,000. This is not new money. It's just money that we already appropriated to them, and it was left over, and it didn't get noticed until recently. So all they're asking to do is put that money back in there so they can continue with the exact same thing that was put in there before. It's not going to change anything. It's just the money was there overlooked.
You heard the explanation on item number 17. Floor is open for discussion on item number 17. Anyone seeking recognition on item number 17? Commissioner Ierson?
Consent counter, please.
Sponsor moves consent counter on item number 17. Is there any objection to consent counter on item number 17? Without objection, item number 17 is placed on consent counter. Before... Oh, excuse me. Mr. Jones? Before we move on, I want to just do a quick run-through of the consent counter. If I've missed a resolution, please let me know. As of right now, consent counter is items four, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, and 17. Did I miss anybody's resolution? Four, six, seven, 10, 11, 12, 17. And we still have a general public comment going. Is there any objection? Can we go ahead and allow that? General public comment before we... We'll do that after we... Do you seek recognition, Attorney Street?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me.
I would just like to plant the seed, ask the commission to consider providing cameras for our law enforcement officers. That issue comes up. I don't know what's going on. Seems like the litigation has gotten a lot worse. I don't know if it's because of Rodney, or not Rodney King. I always want to say Rodney King.
George Floyd.
George Floyd incident or what. But anyway, I'm on my own here. I haven't talked with anybody about this, but it seems to surface quite a bit, and I'd just like to ask you to consider doing that for the Sheriff's Department. I haven't spoke with the Sheriff's Department about it, but it sure will help.
Thank you, Attorney Street.
At this... We can get clarification on consent counter. At this time, I want to open for general public comment. Does anyone that wishes to sign up for general public comment that has not already? We have one. Is there anyone that wishes to sign up for general public comment that didn't get the opportunity to? I'll ask Scott Thompson to approach well three minutes. Recognize for three minutes, if you will, sir, your name and your address, and he'll be recognized for three minutes, sir.
Does this work?
Yes.
It does.
I'm Scott Thompson. I live in 171 Sugar Hollow, Detroit.
All right. All right. We'll start by them.
Okay. I overheard the talk about the payment airline that comes to Troy City Airport. And I'm thinking, if the free market didn't justify it, then penalty areas should not be paying them. And I wanted to show some of my artwork here.
Sir, do you have a copy of that for the clerk?
I have no idea. But I can supply it later on, tomorrow, or whatever.
Anything you bring in, and you have to leave with the clerk?
Okay. I had grown complaining on me quite recently about Bristol, Tennessee Police Department. And I've complained about it, and nobody does anything. I was civil sued. This is one of the civil suits that Dan Street is talking about. I'm about to get beat on that. But I'm not going to read the whole thing I have here. But I will read this part. James Owens had 182 arrests in a one-year period, six months before and six months after my arrest on January 29th of 2021. These are not citations, but they're arrests. I want to know the nature of those arrests. Tennessee law says that I'm entitled to them, but I've been stonewalk on getting them. And it's my understanding that as commissioners who pledge allegiance to the flag and the republic, that it's probably your job to follow this law and tell the city attorney, or the county attorney, that I want... That he should give me the arrest records, 182 of them. I'll pay for them. I'll pay for the trouble to get them, and I would like them. And as far as I can tell, none of you commissioners are interested in this. One more thing. I was on the... At the jail that day, January 29th, 2021. And I go in there, and I'm finally in the main cell. It's about a, we'll say, 50-foot by 80-foot cell. And there's a news hanging from the rafters. And I say, "What's that about?" And they say, "Oh, that's to keep the niggers out here."
Sir?
Yep?
I'll tolerate a lot.
I'm just...
I do. I tolerate a lot, but I will not tolerate that kind of language.
Okay. They said, "That is to keep the black folks out here." And they said, "Look across the hall, and you can see all the black folks over there." Now, I can understand that maybe you want to keep the blacks and the whites separate.
You're actually at your three minutes, or if you can wrap it up in the next few statements.
But as far as you guys knowing what's going on in the Sheriff's Department and the police department, I don't think you do. And you can learn something by looking at all these arrest reports. 182. That's a high number for a police officer. That's where you're, I guess, taking them to jail. Could somebody... Could one of you commissioners get with me and tell me what I need to do to get hold of those records? That'll be it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Since no one else has signed up for general public, you wish to arrest the commission?
Did we... Did you take out item 16 except taking off the...
Item 16 and item number 13 were due. It was the exact same resolution. Yes, sir. Without objection, public... General public comment is closed. We're at the announcement portion of the agenda. Anyone seek recognition for announcements? Mr. Jones?
At our last commission meeting, I asked if who would be interested in having Charlie Curtis come and do a training on parliamentary procedure. I saw just about all the hands go up, so I talked to Charlie. And the only date that is available is January 7th. There are two hours of credit for those that need credit for this. It is a CPAS sponsor. He is the only one in Tennessee that does parliamentary procedure. We're working on the location. I just need to confirm to Charlie that we want to go ahead and do that. It'll be at the evening.
Evening.
Evening after work.
I think we'll all be in favor of that.
Okay. I'll let him know. And keep in mind, he just had a knee replacement. He's doing well, but just to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Ierson?
Just want to make sure everyone knows the Military Market, of course. You heard it opened up the other day, and we did get our plaque on there for the county commission this session of the county commission. So if you have a chance to go by there and take a look at it, it's nice. It worked out really well. A couple of you still owe me money, so it's all...
And I sent out an email earlier today inviting everyone to a Christmas party. It's December 18th. You may remember Recovery Resources was in here in September, and they're having a Christmas party. It looks like it's going to run for several hours. But they just wanted to share their thanks with us for work we're going to be doing with them throughout the next year.
Anyone else seek recognition? Commissioner Means?
Chairman, I'm not sure if those credits are actually constitutional. The credits are mandatory. Just saying. So I was just wondering if this commission would be interested in having maybe a constitutional attorney to come and maybe give us a workshop on Tennessee state constitution. You don't... You would not get credits for that. So I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know how much it costs. But anyways, just let me know if y'all are interested in that. I'm not... I go to the... I like to learn, so I don't just say them.
Commissioner Harv?
So I want to make a comment on the $600. The reason why we talked about that was because a lot of people in here have to take vacation just to go to these trainings. I mean, I'm retired. It doesn't matter to me. I don't care if I get paid or not. It is not... I thought for the people that are having to actually... Because I've asked some people, you know, "Do your employers support you doing this?" No. They have to take personal days or vacation or whatever to go to these. And I think it's important enough that we meet that requirement, and I just... That's the reason that I supported that. But it doesn't appear that anybody supports that. That's fine, but that was the reason for the people that work and have to take off their personal time and personal vacation, be away from their families for that. So it's above and beyond, I think, what our normal expectations are as a commissioner. Thank you.
But before we adjourn, is Jay still available? She's... Does the filming? Jay? Jay, I'd like to actually ask you to come to the well for a second.
Here?
Yeah. I'm going to embarrass Jay real quick. Jay has been a very valuable part of our meetings, does an amazing job, and I just want to let everybody know that Jay has been accepted to the National Honor Society. We're very appreciative of the work you do. You've got a trainee. And who is the trainee?
His name is...
You've got big shoes to fill when Jay graduates, okay? We'll take it easy on you in the beginning.
Yes, my induction ceremony is this Sunday.
This coming Sunday? We're very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else seek recognition for announcements? Motion to adjourn, although in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Adjourned until Thursday next.